Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, September 24. Roll call is, we have Mike Edman and Nicole Green absent. Everybody else is here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have managed to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments of the September 10th meeting.
And I will second it.
College in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And agenda?
I will make a motion to upper the agenda for the September 24th, 2019 school board meeting.
I'll second it.
And all of them favor?
Aye.
No celebrations. Shall we go to you, Joe?
Okay, well briefly enrollment report, pleased to report that we're actually had an increase in student enrollment since our last board meeting by one student. So we have 844 students at the elementary school and 840 at the high school for a total of 1,684. And then looking at the pink sheet, the upcoming school board calendar, just to remind folks that next week is homecoming week at the high school. And there'll be a Partners in Education Homecoming tailgate from 5:00 to 7:00 before the homecoming game. The, let's see, what else? Looks like we have a Policy Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 17. A Policy Committee and an Operations Committee meeting scheduled for October 22. And at some point, we'll want to schedule a Staff Welfare Committee meeting probably before the next school board meeting. And then on Wednesday, October 30th, we have a 7:00 AM Student Council meeting at the high school with school board members that can make it. That would be a nice little way to have a little brunch in the high school. And then the other thing I wanted to call people's attention to is just a reminder that the Minnesota Supreme Court will be coming to Fairmont. And they'll be hearing a oral argument case at Fairmont High School. And we have invited all of the high school students, grades nine through 12 in Martin County. That would be Martin County West, Truman, Grenade and Huttley's Chain, Martin Luther, and of course Fairmont. And they'll be hearing a court case in the high school Performing Arts Center on Wednesday, October 9th. And on Tuesday night preceding the event, there'll be a dinner with the seven members of the Minnesota Supreme Court and that will be held at the Holiday Inn. And for those people that want to go to that meal, it's $20 to cover the cost of the meal. And if you contact the Community Education Department, Rodney Dower, they're the ones that are actually processing tickets for that. And that dinner will start at 5:30. And dinner will be served at 6 o'clock. What's neat about this event, by the way, is that they'll be hearing the oral arguments from 9:00 to 10:00. From 10:00 to 11:00, they'll be taking questions and answers from the student body that's in the Performing Arts Center. And then they'll go and they'll actually visit high school classes individually. And at noon time, our Pro Start program, which is our culinary arts program, they're actually cooking lunch for them. And the menu has been developed by the folks that own Cup and Saucer.
Oh.
They've actually, I've seen the menu and I'm sworn to secrecy.
They do a good job.
I can't tell a newspaper what the menu is. But yeah, they'll do a great job. They've actually, they've been to school and they've been working with our students. So this is great. This is the 50th time that they've done that. And our wood shop program, by the way, is making a special, kind of a cutting board for each of the justices with their name on it.
Oh, nice.
And it's, because it's the 50th time that they've done this over the last 25 years. They select a inner city, or I should say a metro school, one of the seven counties, and they select another county in Greater Minnesota, and we've been selected this year.
Nice.
So we're very pleased about that and it's a great honor for us and it'll be great for the kids.
Exciting.
That's all we have.
Do you know some of the history of, what, I mean, this is really for, really something for Martin County to have. But what would be the closest that they have been brought, you know, prior years?
According to Jake Teague, they've been to Worthington.
Okay.
And I remember years ago, they were in Austin.
Okay.
And that's the closest probably they've been. And the reason why, one of the reasons we were selected is that one of the seven justices started his legal career here in Fairmont. I believe his last name is Anderson. And he actually worked with Terry Wieselmann.
Oh, okay.
And they went to college together. And he started his legal career here for a few years, but he's one of the Supreme Court justices. And in Minnesota, by the way, Supreme Court justices have to retire once, the day they turn 70, they have to retire. Otherwise, we would have had Ellen Page here.
Oh, sure.
Because he had retired a few years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But I mean, it's just something that, you know, doesn't come every year. So it would be something, if you wanted to attend and that, it would be a special event.
It is a very special event and we want to thank the local folks that organized that.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, financial business. Dan?
Okay, in Appendix A, we have quite a few donations and grants to look at as provided in Minnesota statutes. We have resolved that Fairmont Area Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations or grants as identified heretofore. From Fairmont Hy-Vee, school supplies, an amount of $600 value for Fairmont Elementary School. From Devon Hegeman, the American Legion, an American flag with a $50 value to Fairmont Elementary School. First Farmers and Merchants Bank of Fairmont, school supplies, a $750 value for the elementary and junior, senior high school. From Martin County Pork Producers, pork certificates with a $200 value for Fairmont Elementary School. For Avery, from Avery Waytronics, school supplies with a $300 value for the junior, senior high school. From Peterson Anthony Insurance, school supplies of a $250 value to Fairmont Junior, Senior High School. And from Profinium, the back-to-school picnic, $750 value. That back-to-school picnic was held for Fairmont district staff and families. It wasn't a picnic because we had to go to the cafeteria because of possible storminess, just like tonight, so. But it was a fine event and these are outstanding donations. So I would make a motion to accept the donations as listed in Appendix A.
I'll second it.
Any questions? And we do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we'll move to finances with Chris.
I'll start with the wire transfer sheet. Not a whole lot to review there, but we have one payment to Commerce Bank and some revenue we've received through Ideas. I will move to the budget model or Treasury Report. The first category there, the revenues, they look a little weird. It has to do with how I booked my receivables for FY '19. So as we move forward, that'll kind of correct and normal out. The expenditures are, we're about at 3.4% of our budget at this point, which looking at the prior years, that's pretty normal. Flipping to the back page, our revenues for the different funds, again, some of the reversing entries or the receivables are affecting that. And the expenditures are pretty normal to the prior years. Moving on to payments, on the payment registered, the first payment I'm going to review with you guys is check number 63168 to Ingenuity. That is a instructional software license for Odysseyware. We have five licenses or five seats with them. The next check will be check number 63200 to National Restaurant Associations. That is purchasing new textbooks or curriculum for our fax classes. Check number 63208 for, that is another instructional software license for a software called Freckle. It's a math curriculum. And the last one, check number 63215 to the visual identity vault. That is for some of the vinyl going up on the windows, the, what would you call that, Joe, what they're doing over there?
There are the, we're trying to brand both school districts and so we have big cardinals that are like little displays, like mini billboards inside.
Yep. Perfect. That's it for the financial reports.
I have reviewed those with Chris prior to the meeting and so if there are any other questions or anything from members, I would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for 8/23/19 to 9/5/19 and the payment of the September 10th, 2019 bills.
I'll second it.
Any questions, discussion? All of them favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tax levy? Chris?
Yes. So this is our proposed levy for pay 20. Taxes are paid in 20. District recognizes the revenue in our fiscal year 21. Overall, we are proposing a reduction of 2.93%. A lot of that has to do with adjustments from prior years and a little bit of a, excuse me, decline in enrollment. Yes, that's all I have on it for right now anyways.
Joe?
Well, and this is, we, and Dan was involved in this too. We were at the Operations Committee meeting the other day and we were looking at this. And it's, you know, one of the things that is interesting about the way that we finance schools and finance cities and counties is really different. Because in Minnesota, cities and counties can, they can decide to raise, they can decide to levy property taxes as much as they want to. They can raise it, they can lower it, they can do whatever. School districts, though, do not have that authority. We can only levy the amount of money that, that the state allows us to based on a formula. And in the Operations Committee the other day, and we can give these reports to all board members once it's finalized, but it's a 40-page document and Dan reviewed that with us the other day. The School Aid Foundation Form in Minnesota is very complex. It's 40 pages long, three columns per page. And it's this formula, and it's, what really drives it is how many students are you serving in the elementary and how many students are you serving in the high school? And then you take that number and all throughout this 40-page document, that acts as a multiplier. And so whether you're doing lease levy, like we're paying for the Arise Academy, or if you're doing Q Comp, which is a combination of state and local funding, it's really a fascinating formula, very complex. And, but anyway, the good news is because of the, because of the number of students that we're serving, not only this year, but we're also looking down the road a year from now. That's an important point too, because a year from now, we kind of expect that maybe our enrollment might go down a little bit. And the rationale for that is if you looked at your enrollment report tonight, we have 144 seniors, but next year we'll only have 119 seniors. Because that junior class, which is the class that was born after 9/11, throughout the country, that's a smaller group of kids. A lot of folks just kind of held off on having children for a year to kind of see what was going to happen after 9/11 and after we were involved in a couple of wars. I guess we still are involved in a couple of wars. Anyway, the, so anyway, so we're already projecting two years from now saying, well, looks like our enrollment might go down around 20 or 25 students. So that reflects the decrease. But the good news is, and I'm sure the headline of the paper is going to be, is that the Fairmont area schools, property taxes go down. So I think the motion's going to be that we're looking at a 2.93% reduction. And the total levy, if I can, is this correct, Chris? It's going to be the $5,545,482.33.
Correct.
So whoever makes that motion, let me make sure we put that number in there.
And this year's, just for comparison, this year's, the final pay 2019, that was, levied was $5,711,897.31. So we're looking at about 150-ish thousand, 160,000.
167.
Yeah, 167.
Yeah.
See, I was doing what my elementary math teacher told me. You guesstimate first and then you narrow it on the right answer.
Okay. But you're probably going to make the motion, Dan, right? And you're going to put in this number here.
Yeah, I would think so. And then we also, if, if we like, we can actually lower that amount even more in December. We cannot raise it after we approve this amount, but we can make it even lower if we, if we like. So, as in Appendix A1, I make a motion to approve the proposed 2019 payable 2020 tax levy to include a 2.93% decrease reflecting a total levy amount of 167,800, 167,000.
The $5 million.
Oh, okay. That's the difference I'm looking at.
Yep.
And I will second it.
Mari? Okay, questions, discussion? All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Dan. Move to personnel. Mari?
We're recommending that Amanda Lopez be hired as community outreach support person to assist our community outreach coordinator, Jessica Martinez. Amanda will be working with our high school EL teacher and will serve as an interpreter for the high school. Previously, Amanda has served as a translator for Martin County Humane Services and Head Start. Amanda's services are very much needed as our out-of-country student population continues to grow. And then the second one is Michelle and Andy Tredo have offered Michelle Hudson a part-time position as a para candidate. So I will make a motion to hire Amanda Lopez as a community outreach support person effective September 26, 2019, for the 2019-2020 school year at a salary of $20 an hour. And make a motion to hire Michelle Hudson as a part-time paraprofessional effective September 20, 2019, at a salary of step one.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All of them favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Mari. And we'll move to medical leave. Julie?
Yes, we have an employee who has requested a medical leave due to a surgery that will be October 23rd and extending for approximately three weeks. And so I'll make a motion to approve an employee's medical leave request effective October 23rd through November 12, 2019, or per medical recommendation.
I will second it.
Questions? All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, and Julie?
Yeah, I will do the teacher seniority list. The 19, the 2019-2020 seniority list is enclosed with your packet. All the staff have reviewed that as well. And any changes that were needed to them, or if there was any questions, that that's all been taken care of. And so the seniority list is there and we just want to approve the 2019-2020 seniority list as presented tonight's meeting.
I will second that.
Any questions? All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Dan, are you going to do the contract stipend?
As part of the board-approved building and grounds agreement with Southern Plains Education Cooperative, Fairmont is to provide the Arise Academy with project management services. So Tyler Garrison, who is our head of buildings and grounds at Fairmont High School, will be the employee who provides those services to spec. So we are going to recommend amending his contract to include a $12,000 stipend allowed for in the agreement that was previously made. So I move that stipend be approved.
I second that.
Any questions? All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. We will move to board reports. Operations, Dan?
Yeah, we do have the Operations Committee meeting from September 23rd. First, Chris, our business manager, did the proposed tax levy and gave us the 40-page document, which I found to be kind of like one of those, if you remember when you were a kid, if you read those books that were Choose Your Own Adventure, you know? If this, you go to page 112. If this, you know, go to line 734, whatever. And that, that's pretty amazing how complex that is compared to other states.
That is, that is interestingly what that is, very.
That's what I thought of.
Yes, yes, it's, yeah, it is.
So that is how we know we can reduce our, our property taxes by 2.93%.
I think that document was 13 pages when I first started, just to, just to let you know what the changes have been.
Mine's, I left mine on this, in my vehicle.
Is that document available?
No, I mean, when I started in the board.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yep. So we can, all, you can all see how much fun it is to look through there. We also had the renewal of the lease on the Hunt Farm, the land that was donated to us many years ago. And we rented out as farmland, 124 acres is the size of the farm. And we approved renewal with Chris Carlson, who has been with that land, has been renting that land for the past five years. And the amount is going to be the same as last year, $257 an acre, which will generate an amount of $31,868. And that goes to the, what we call the Hunt Fund. And then we have the, what's the other one, Joe, that's associated with that?
Partners in Education.
Partners in Education, yes. Those, and those go to provide teacher requests for equipment and curriculum. Happy to see that we got the same amount for the land this year as last because, you know, the prices have been very bad. So in a lot of cases, rental rates will be going down, but ours will stay the same. And Tyler Garrison has a plan for us to kind of reshuffle the departments as far as adding one additional custodian at Fairmont Elementary. And the way we would be able to do this is because we have a pending retirement of our journeyman electrician on December 1st. So we could actually hire a custodian and then have a part-time electrician, a master electrician, that would work for us two days a week at a very reasonable wage for an electrician. So that would actually be a savings of $30,000 and would be able to add another person to help out moving snow and things like that at the elementary school. So the Operations Committee approved the plan and now it'll go to the staff welfare. And we just had a few other things to mention. I guess Mike Edman had been to the St. Cloud Tech, the new high school that they have there?
Well, I think he saw something online and.
Okay, he wants to go there to see. It's a $100 million building. So, and apparently it is state of the art, so.
And there was a website listed here in your committee minutes, you'll be getting online, but there's a website you can go to and there's actually a video of the St. Cloud Technical High School. And it's pretty, pretty interesting.
And then I had mentioned that there was an article in the Washington Post from earlier this week that focused on the enrollment and growth in the Worthington School District. So we looked at that and chatted about that. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, team? Entertained a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.